All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Mr. Brickley, could you lead us in invocation and pledge?
Do you want me to stand? Oh, it's right, dear Lord, this morning in the month of our Thanksgiving, I think it's only appropriate that we give, the board gives thanks for waking us up this morning, giving us the help to get out and work for the people, help us to be part of the solution and not the problem.
Yes, Jesus.
We, we give you thanks for all of our boards and committees that hundreds of our citizens serve on to help the county. We give thanks for our first responders, the life-saving crew fire, our sheriff's departments, all those people in the county that are there to serve us.
Yes, Jesus.
Help us through the day, help us to make good decisions.
Yes, Jesus.
In Jesus' name we pray.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sir, District One, Daryl Jeter.
Here.
District Two, Michelle Glover.
Here.
District Three, Eddie Skeen.
Here.
District Four, Michael Bricky.
Here.
District Five, Danny Castile.
Here.
District Six, Chris Manus.
Here.
At-large, Stephanie Addington.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a formal. Thank you, sir. Has everyone had a chance to look over our agenda today? Are there any last-minute additions, changes, modifications, deletions, anything like that?
Do have a couple additions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Property management, high near center cricket road and tech center, Keith Hart. And one other, Commissioner Office update, that's some deadlines on collecting taxes, and also an update on the farm trial redemption.
Okay. Do I have, so I guess we'll need to add each of those individually, is that correct?
What was the first one, property management? Unfinished business. We want to do that unfinished business, since we technically have, well, all of it, we talked about. We can just do new business, why don't we just do both of them? Property management, other new business.
Okay. Property management under.
D and A. One on D, one on A.
All right.
Yeah.
So do I have a motion for property management?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, everybody vote my way to say no.
No.
Opposed? All right, motion carries, and then what was the next one?
Commissioner's Office Update.
Yeah. Tax collection, Commissioner update. Do I have a motion for adding that to the agenda? The agenda, I'm sorry. No motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, everybody vote my way to say no.
No.
Is there anything else? All right, as everybody, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended by these processes?
So moved.
About a second.
Second, yeah.
All right, Stephanie moves and Michelle seconds. Everybody vote my way to say ah.
Ah.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I did have one other thing, not agenda-related, but we normally respond to the previous meetings, citizens' expression questions. At what point did we want to do that from the last meeting?
Let's do that in, where is that? That is Board of Supervisors comments, requests, and recommendations, line 150. All right, has everyone had a chance to read over the minutes from June? And, well, let's just do June. Are there any changes, additions, deletions? Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Make that motion.
All right, Michelle makes the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll go.
Danny seconds. Everybody vote my way to say ah.
Ah.
All right, approved. Has it, all right.
Go ahead.
Has everybody had a chance to read over the October 5th, 2025 minutes? Are there any changes or deletions or modifications there? All right, do I hear a motion to approve these minutes? That's in standing.
So moved.
Mr. Chief moves.
Danny seconds.
Everybody vote my way to say ah.
Ah.
All right, opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving right along to citizens' expression. Okay. All right, so we'll go into citizens' expression. There's a little bit here that we'd like to read. Citizens' expression period is a point in the meeting when anyone who wishes to address the board may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from in the county, and/or what organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, we have no particular order. We ask that you take turns and speak your business. Today, we have several that have asked to speak, and they're, we'll get to that, but I'll call you up one at a time, and then after that, we'll open it up to the rest of the public. Any actions will be considered after we close citizens' expression, and a lot of the discussion does happen later in the meeting. So with that, I'm going to open public expression. Ms. Megan Smith, please come forward.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Megan Smith. I'm a board-certified oncology nurse with almost 17 years' experience. As I'm sure most of you are aware, there has been an alarming increase of pediatric cancer cases in Scott County in the last two years. Thirteen is the total as of Monday. Three of those cancer cases have been diagnosed within the last three weeks. I have, I myself have been looking into this before the state decided to investigate. We are aware, the public is aware of the update that the state gave or the Virginia Cancer Registry gave. There are several community members that are very concerned about the two-year delay in the information that the Virginia Cancer Registry has requested from surrounding areas. Folks, I've been in oncology for several years, and I would like to give you some statistics straight from the American Cancer Society and from the National Comprehensive Cancer Network Guidelines, which all cancer institutions across the United States of America use. There are several children in the county that have B-cell acute lymphoblastic leukemia. The statistics for those are 1.38 children per 100,000. One number I want you to keep in mind, per the 2023 census in Scott County, there are less than 4,000 kids in Scott County. Two of the children have the same brain tumor, a medullar blastoma. They're, one from Hiltons and one from Gate City. The statistics for that are 1.8 children per 100,000. One of the recent diagnoses is a stage-four Burkitt lymphoma from Big Moxon. That is a super rare. It is four in 1 million children. One of our newest ones was diagnosed two weeks ago. She has a very rare liver cancer. She's 15 years old. That cancer is less than 1% of all liver cancers in the United States. Now, that's just, you know, a select few of the kids that are on the list, there are 13. There is a current 11-month-old that is in St. Jude's right now, being worked at for a potential stage-four neuroblastoma, which there is another little fellow in Duffield with stage-four neuroblastoma being treated at St. Jude's as we speak. As you can see, there is a big concern, there is a big concern in the delay that the update from the Virginia Cancer Registry, and the community has outreach for outside sources to come in and try to help, because at this point in time, it's not a matter of if another child is diagnosed, it is a matter of when a child is diagnosed. Any type of childhood cancer, the statistics are four in 100,000. There are less than 4,000 kids in Scott County. If that doesn't terrify you for your future generations, it should. I appreciate you all allowing me the time to speak today. I hope you keep those numbers in mind, keep the parents in mind in your prayers, and the community is, the community is terrified, and for your children.
Usually, we keep comments in the last, but seeing as how serious this issue is, do you mind if we talk a little bit in a first second?
Go ahead.
Do you, do you have a theory on like what's causing it, or does anyone really, are there geographic clusters, I guess is what I'm asking?
There are a lot of the children that are in the Duffield, Rockco, Fort Blackmore area. There are what I call a few off cases that are like, there is a stage-four testicular, there was a stage-four thyroid. Okay, those aren't, well, I would typically, you know, put into a cluster, but they are a cancer stage-four. But the rarity of some of these diagnoses, it's mind-blowing. I have, there have been members of the county that are, they're testing the water, they're testing the school, and you know, everybody knows that radon is, you know, a huge factor in this area, but even if it was radon, why in the last two years would it just be causing a huge explosion of pediatric cancer cases? I have gone back 10 years in requesting the parents contact me that have had childhood cancers. There are even more B-cell acute lymphoblastic leukemia cases than I had anticipated in the last 10 years. But the last two years, 13 cancer cases is astronomical. There are typically almost 16,000 kids estimated to be diagnosed out of 73 million kids in the United States, and 13 of those kids are in Scott County, Virginia.
Yeah, the reason I was asking that is I was curious about the radon.
Yeah.
And I would encourage anyone that, you know, the state of Virginia offers free radon testing, that you can order online, that comes in a little packet, pop it down and sell. It's not hard to do, so I just want to make sure.
I encourage radon testing, you know, mitigation, I encourage water testing, soil sampling, you know, just to try to see if there is an environmental factor. All of these children have had genetic testing. There's only one child that had a genetic anomaly, and it has never been linked to any type of cancer out of the 50 years that has been studied.
I would, I would like to appoint kind of a representative from the board. That should be your first contact if you all need anything that we can do. You know, our power is somewhat limited, but we'll wield it however we can. We can pester people to death if we have to, and we have before, we'll do it again. I'd like to appoint Ms. Addington, since she is at-large and, you know, a representative for the whole county.
Okay.
If you need anything, please reach out to her, and she, she is there for you. She is a worker, and, and I, I know that we want something done now, but you know, it does take time, but the time to start is right now, and so let's get started.
We understand that things take time. It's just, you know, when the Virginia Cancer Registry gave the update of the two-year delay, we don't have two years. We don't, we don't have two years, and the faster, the more that we can bug them, you know, do whatever we can do to get them to move a little faster, because it's, like I said, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when.
Yes, ma'am. Stephanie can be that burdened sample for you. Give me a moment. We talked about this before, so I think she's fit with that. Is that representative?
I'm happy to do whatever.
I think there's something in his presentation. Is there anything additional that you want to add?
Basically, this is from Leno Wisco Planning District, and I maybe, were you the one that emailed me?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that was basically the update that I had for later in the meeting, but that they had reached out to the Health Department to see where they were at, and they, basically they just said that they had done the survey of the families, turned that over to the answer registry for their research, and they did say that if there were any new cases, I would just let, you could let us know, and we can get that information to Leno Wisco and then to the Health District, but just to keep them updated on cases as they come up.
I'd absolutely do that.
Yes.
Do you know of any other cases in surrounding counties?
I, so I have, I know of one other case in Wise County. It is a B-cell lymphoblastic leukemia, but when I looked at the numbers, they were like your typical childhood cancer diagnosis, is you know, two to three, nothing like Scott County. Lee County was the same way. Of course, Tennessee and Kingsport and the surrounding areas, a whole different ballgame to look at when it comes to that type of stuff, but the surrounding counties is nowhere near what Scott County is. I haven't reached out to many parents in surrounding counties, but I did do a general like oversee of the Virginia Cancer Registry and diagnoses that had been logged.
Did you check Sullivan County, Hawkins County?
I have not checked in the state of Tennessee, because the state, or the Hawkins County and Sullivan County, I hadn't checked into that, because the numbers are exponentially larger than the children over there. I can, I can absolutely look into that. I just focused on southeast Virginia for the moment.
But around Russell County.
I didn't reach as far out as Russell County. I've had a few parents to reach out to me in Russell County, just two or three here and there for past diagnoses, but nothing current. Any other questions for me?
Thank you for coming on. Thank you for being a advocate for these kids. We really appreciate that, and we need more of that here, so thank you so much.
Good luck, the Lord is light on my heart. Thank you for having me. Thank you.
Thank you for listening to.
Bye.
All right, Hiltons Fire Department is next on the agenda. You gentlemen, I'd like to come up.
Good morning, everybody. I'm David Music. I live on Music Drive, that's a farm road right off of Boosie Creek, about a mile from Bristol Highway, on the eastern end of the county. I'm here as a resident of the county, but also as a proud member of Hiltons Volunteer Fire Department. With me today, I've got Dale Sanders, who is the chief of Hiltons Volunteer Fire Department, Jimmy Singleton, who's the senior firefighter in charge of Hilton Station 2, and Larry Music, my father, who's also a member of Hiltons from Station 2. I'm here to bring you some good news about Hiltons Volunteer Fire Department, but to do that, I've got to tell you a little story, and it's a story about a dream coming true, and I think you don't like it, so just bear with me a minute. Starts out kind of rough, because 43 years ago, when I was just 12 years old, yeah, I'm that old, our house got fired. But based on a little bit of good advice from volunteer firefighters that my dad worked with, we were able to save our home because our water hose was in the basement, and it was not frozen solid outside. My parents didn't even know there was a fire department that would come to our house, and they didn't know who to call, and I'd say that's pretty rare for everybody in the county back then. Since that day, my dad dreamed of having fire services on the east end of Scott County. When public water came to Boosie Creek, he started asking questions and started pursuing it more earnestly as time went by. In 2022, I mean, 2023, there were some interest meetings held, and that son, Jimmy Singleton, and Larry Music, became members of Hiltons Volunteer Fire Department. You fast forward to this year, two old classmates from Gate City were discussing the need for equipment to be located on the east end of the county, and a deal was struck for a dollar a year to use one bay of a machinery shed on his farm. Then another neighbor donated a drain tile and his services and materials to install that, and another community member gave a huge quantity of gravel, so we had all of their access, road to access the facility. Then another neighbor gave us a large quantity of sawdust lumber. Several other neighbors have donated other building materials that we needed. Two different neighbors have also donated use of their construction and farm equipment to finish the building, prepare the roadway, get everything and get over. So I think you can see a trend of support from the community for the effort that's going on here. What it does is significantly reduces the response times for fire services for a part of the county that was previously very difficult to serve, to serve because the neighbor's so far away. Now, I know that was a long and winding story, but I'm telling you all of that to tell you this. With all these donations, very little cash, and well over 500 man-hours on part of the department members, on October 24th, Unit 406 from Hiltons was moved to 6863 Boosie Creek Road, referred to by the members and by dispatch as Station 2. Although it's nothing fancy, but it is pretty nice, if I do say so myself, our substation's now ready to respond to calls. I think you can see how this is a dream come true for my family and a huge benefit for citizens on the east end. Just to give you a little more information about our new substation, how it fits in, we currently have four members that live in Santa Barbara. I've introduced Jimmy, but I didn't tell you, he's originally a founding member from Green Springs in Washington County, who now lives in Scott County, so he's got 19 years of experience and has put in 200 training hours this year, so we've got a great people there for us. You've got my dad, you've got myself, and another member that couldn't come today, Johnny Cox-Smith. Just to be clear, Station 2 doesn't just respond near home. If it's in our district, we're there. And the firefighters down at Hiltons, they don't just stay home if they see it's east end. It's just a first attack in an area that's pretty far from them. We're all Hiltons Longtiers. We cover 69 rural square miles, and we all go all the time. We try to get as many members out as we can. Having said that, in addition to community support, none of it could have happened without the support of the board members and officers at Hiltons Department. I've got two more things. First, we're having a celebration at Station 2 on Saturday, and when I'm finished, I'm going to hand you all out invitations. We'd love if you could come up from 3 to 7. Boosie Creek Smokers is putting together a free barbecue meal, and there's going to be some great homemade desserts from supporters of the fire department. There'll be some equipment, there'll be a lot of members of the fire department there, you can see what we've done. That said, lastly, anytime somebody in the fire department addresses the board, we do have to ask you to consider a few things for us. The cost of all our most important gear, our trucks, our hoses, our turnout, our IPACs have at least doubled, if not more, in the last 10 years, and they all have an expiration date by which they must be replaced, even if they've never been used. And that applies to every department in the county, not just Hiltons. But if your turnout gear's 10 years old, if you've never had it on, you still have to replace it. Many of us are getting to the point where replacing trucks that are 25 years and older, the fleet of seven class A pumpers from 2001 at the county vault were 148,000, and they're costing over $450,000 to replace. But our allocation for equipment purchases went from $15,000 to $15,714 in the same time period. So keep that information in mind when you're doing county budgeting. You know you can't bring money out of thin air, but keep in mind that, you know, we're here to serve, but we have to be properly equipped. Thanks for your time. Be happy to answer any questions you've got for us now, or you can reach out to Chief or one of us later, and we hope to see you on Boosie Creek on Saturday if you can come.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate how you're serving your community, and that's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's really awesome, it's pretty much everything that I asked. Yeah.
If we, if you can go out and seize a bill.
A lot of community, I mean, for everybody getting together and giving and everything like that, that is absolutely wonderful, absolutely wonderful.
Yeah, it's, things just magically appeared on an as-needed basis. Somebody, I thought, well, why didn't you call me? I can do this, okay, do it. Well, I'd love to help you with that, okay, thank you.
It is needed in that area, it really was.
It is.
And whenever I went to the Boosie Creek Community Center, everyone was like, you know, we, we need a fire station up here, look what you all done. Absolutely wonderful, absolutely wonderful.
Thanks, thank you, sir. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, next, Peggy Cottis.
Good morning. Peggy Cottis from Snowflake Road. I don't know how that might be first.
You don't have to be that far to hear.
Didn't have much of it. But I'm here on behalf of all dirt roads in Scott County. B-Dot, they have got a lot of maintenance to do, and still hoping for some help from Terry Hill, Lori Piddin, and I haven't had a chance to check on the Riverside property, and I just want to keep Snowflake Road on the six-year plan, and we've got a lot to be thankful for, and y'all have a blessed Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Harris.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure to sit. All right, next, Ms. Bobby Powers.
I'm Bobby Powers from Dugan, here on behalf of Appalachian Citizens for Community Efficiency. I'm here to address a critical issue affecting Scott County taxpayers, the full funding of Tennessee students attending our school tuition-free without any formal agreement to share those costs. I have already filed a petition for declaratory judgment and injunctive relief in Scott County Circuit Court to clarify whether this practice is lawful. This isn't about politics, it's about accountability and transparency. If this board believes it has acted correctly, now is the time to show it through openness, because continued resistance to simple information will not look favorable in court. When I requested documents through FOIA, every request, every question was met with, the Board of Supervisors has no document responsive to this request. Yet Michael Bricky stated in last July's meeting that they used to have to require a cross-border agreement to send students back and forth, and that he knew of no such agreement now, and Board Member Stephanie publicly stated that 14% of school funding comes from the county and 84% from the state. Both comments directly answered my FOIA questions, yet they were excluded from the official response, which is troubling. In addition, County Attorney Sally Kegley either did not recall or did not research these statements. This suggests either that the board does not fully understand what it contributes from taxpayers' funds, or it does not fully understand the legality of its actions, or there is a reluctance to engage truthfully with citizens' inquiries. It is also important to clarify the funding mechanics. State and federal funds follow the student to the actual school it attended. In the case of Tennessee, students attending Scott County schools, Virginia received per pupil funding, not Tennessee. County taxpayers are contributing 14% locally. However, the concern is that these local funds are being spent without a clear legal basis, which could still constitute a slush fund in the sense of discretionary or unauthorized use of taxpayers' money, especially given the lack of transparency and evasion of FOIA requests. Additionally, Tennessee residents may be paying property tax on these students at home, yet the state and federal funding for education follows the student to Virginia. This creates a potential double burden where the local Virginia taxpayers are fully funding the students, while idle state families may also be contributing locally without any reciprocal benefit. Historically, Virginia courts have recognized that taxpayers may be entitled to recover funds when local taxes are leveled unlawfully or without legal authority. For example, in Alderson versus County of Allegheny, the same principle applies here. Unlawful taxation or expenditure, even if unintended, must be corrected when brought to light. This demonstrates that transparency and proper accounting are not just proven, they are legally required. While the court ultimately decides the legality of tuition-free enrollment of non-resident students, I respectfully urge the Board of Supervisors to allocate and account local education funding based solely on the count of Virginia resident students. Publishing clear factual information on contributions would demonstrate good faith and transparency, which would look favorable to the court. The Virginia and Tennessee attorney generals and the state auditors have been notified of pending judicial review. It would be wise for the board to consult outside counsel and ensure compliance before the court compels disclosure. Scott County citizens deserve to know where their tax dollars go, and they deserve assurance that funds are being used lawfully and transparently. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Myron Fields. Sorry, I had a hard time reading.
I know, believe me. She was scratching. Morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Myron Fields. I'm from Stanley Town. An organization, I'm just here for all the people along Cove Creek. We need your help badly. Going back in history, the flood in '77 carved new channels in the creek, eroded farmland, and threatened structures, and we needed help in '77, and the help came right away. The government moved in two big D-9 dozers and channeled the creek from the mountains to the river, and things have been going along good. Of course, the dozers just pushed the material out of the creek and up on the creek banks and created burns, which acted as a buffer, but over the years, this material has started eroding back into the creek, and this large flood event in the spring has completely washed all these burns and material back in the creek that's The channel is full, threatening our homes and our property, and the creek needs cleaned out once again. But so far, no one's paid any attention to it. There's been no uproar about it, no people have come to check on it, and it's just like we've been forgotten. Mr. Castile and I started the project to try to get some help. And I have contacted different agencies, and I tried to go about it logically. Of course, logic doesn't get you anywhere anymore, but first off, I contacted the Virginia Cooperative Extension, who suggested getting in touch with the County Soil and Water Conservation Office. When I did that, they came out and looked at the creek, said, yeah, it's a mess. It really needs work. And Soil and Water Conservation said, we will be glad to help you replant it, but we're not gonna do anything to protect your land from washing away. If you get it cleaned out and re-channeled, we'll bring you some seed and some trees and you can stabilize the banks, but that's it. No help there. So they suggested I contact the Army Corps of Engineers. So I called the Army Corps of Engineers. They said, well, our hands are tied right now, and we have to have directions from above, wherever above is. And you do have our permission to get in there and clean out any trees that have fallen in the creek, but as far as disturbing the material, no, you can't touch it. And we can't do anything until we get directions from above. Okay, so we start another round. Above, I contacted Terry Gilgore, talked to him. Terry said, yeah, we'll work on the problem. Weeks went by, I heard nothing from him. So I contacted Morgan Griffith's office, said, yeah, where are the problem? Terry's brought it up, and we're working on it. Okay, working on it now. Haven't heard anything. All right. Next organization. I contacted FEMA. Oh, you have problems. We will send a delegation. FEMA showed up. I took them along the creek, showed them the problem. Yeah, you've definitely got a problem, and we will take it under advisement to get back to you. I'm still waiting. So we suggested contacting Virginia 511. Okay. Contact Virginia 511, contacted them. They were nice enough to give me the telephone numbers to Morgan Griffith, the Army Corps of Engineers, and Terry Gilgore's office, and said, contact them. Better than done that. Now what? So that's where we're at. Mr. Castile and Ms. Addington, I are working on it, but we're not getting anywhere. So we feel we need some help from the board. Maybe you all can get something started because we've had no luck ever. And we've been trying. All right. The extent of the problem, I'd like to start up at the head of the creek at the mountains where it comes out. Coming out of the mountain, the creek's doing well. Comes down to the first house on the creek, which is owned by Mr. Rick Spyvy, I think. Creek channel there is completely filled, level with the yard. The next major high-water event will be in the yard, if not in the house. Will it wash the house away? Eventually. Can't predict the time. Next property down the creek is the Winston property. Mr. Winston lives in Cleveland, Ohio. He's built a small cabin on his property and an outbuilding, and the creek is right level with it and ready to wash it out. Of course, Mr. Winston's only here about a week or two out of the year to stay in it, so he really doesn't have a contact with you all. But at the Winston property, the lower end of it, the creek is level with the road. Cove Creek mine lane, the creek did overflow the road, carved out a gully through the road, and people were finding a way around it to start with, but eventually they've got the gully worn down to where they can't drive down in it and back up out of it and on up the road. That was in March. You'd think the highway department would have brought in a load of gravel or something and filled the gully to where it would have been easy for people to cross, but nothing's been done. Gully's still there. Don't know where the highway department is. Coming on down the creek to the Thornton property, which is below the Maig Stanley Town Road Bridge over Cove Creek. Nadine owns the Thornton property. She's one of the heirs. She lives in North Carolina. She's a nursing home now, but for the last time she was in, she talked to me and said, please see if you can get something done about the creek. Because there, the creek channel is full. It's eroded about twenty to twenty-five feet over into her yard, and it's cutting more out of it. The next property down is the McAnue property. Same story there because it's cut twenty-five feet over on Nadine. It is cut twenty-five feet over on McAnue's property too. I know Mr. McAnue's been in contact with Mr. Castile also to try to get something done. How much more of the yard it will take, where it'll go from there, who knows? Next property down the creek is Cody Collier's property. He has just been here a couple of years now. He moved in from Wyeth County. But same story, creek channel is full. On his property, during high water, or during flood states, the creek splits. Part of it tries to stay in the channel, which is full. Part of it comes by his house, through his yard, and down through his pasture field to my pasture field. And where it's coming through his yard, it did destroy one of his outbuildings. He has torn it down and moved it out, but it destroyed it. The lower end of his property, it took out his fence along the road. Of course, it took out the fence between he and I. And there, the creek came down, the paved Maig Stanley Town Road, ran down to my house, where I had a waterfall in my front yard, coming out of the road down into the yard and then down through our field there, down through our barn, eroded the foundation on the barn, down through the pasture, into the equipment shed where it flooded the equipment. Then it started back over to the creek. But back up to Mr. Collier's property where it split, part of the channel, the water kept trying to go down the old channel, which was full. And when it got down to our property, channel's full, where's it gonna go? Over in our hayfield. It eroded about twenty to twenty-five feet off the hayfield. The creek is in the hayfield now, instead of in the creek bed where it's supposed to be. The water washed down to the lower end of the hayfield where it deposited rocks and sand, making about a half, three-quarter acre of it unusable. Can't get in our old equipment to cut it. It's nothing but rock and debris. All right. Coming on down the creek, behind Terry Fields's house, the creek is eroded about seventy-five feet over into the pasture field there. Nowhere near where it's supposed to be. You can stand there and still see the burns on the other side because they're left, but it took all of them out on this side of the creek and cut over. And cutting through the pasture field, it ran down into the woodlot. And at the woodlot, of course, that blocked it up. Trees washed in. And at the woodlot now, the creek is trying to go through it, but it makes a ninety-degree turn back toward the hill. Creeks aren't supposed to make ninety-degree turns. But it shoots it back over to the woods across where the creek used to be. It's eroded about fifty feet of the woods on that side down to Carter Place, and it's cut about twenty-five feet off the bank toward Ms. Carter's house. And the problem there is, property lines call for the creek to be the property blind. So Mrs. Carter's lost about twenty-five, thirty feet of land there, where we gained twenty-five, thirty feet of rock on our side of the creek. So the property lines are skewed there now. Next down the creek is the McAnue property. There, the creek overflowed, flooding his pasture field. Down through the pasture field, the old two-story house on the property was completely surrounded by water, front and back. The channel was supposed to be in the back where part of the water flowed, flowing, but the front, all the front pasture was flooded, so the house was cut off. Water there ran back toward the creek, down through his two barns, flowed through the two barns, back into the creek. Next up is Arthur Carter's property. It overflowed his pasture field, covering it, leaving debris. Then the creek comes back down to the end of Arthur Carter's property where it makes a gentle right turn, and Mr. William Johnson's hay, uh, cornfield is there. Well, of course, channel is full, creek couldn't y'all get back down to the right. So it came down to Mr. Johnson's cornfield, eroding part of it. The only problem there is, the end of Mr. Johnson's cornfield is Rycow Memorial Road. And it being elevated like it is is the only thing that saved Mr. Gary Hass's mobile home on the other side of the road because the elevated roadway blocked the water from his home. If it hadn't, creek would have went right down through his mobile home, possibly washing into it. But when it hit the elevated roadway there, it came to the left and completely flooded the intersection of Maig Stanley Town Road and Rycow Memorial Road. Cars could not get through.
Takes a pickup. Takes a four-wheel-drive pickup to get through.
At least. From there, it completely flooded the Pruitt hayfields down through there. Next was William Johnson's other cornfield, which was completely covered and flooded. Next up, Carter property hayfield, which was completely flooded and overflowed. Some debris is left there and made part of that hayfield unusable. Floated through the barn there, and on down to the racehorse farm, which is another problem. The old racehorse farm because in the thirties and forties, it was a racehorse farm. They had a track and stables and everything there. But as you can see, we've tried to contact the right people to get the problem looked at. And like I said, no luck. Now, that's the problems on the upper part of the creek. Mr. Greg Johnson this year, he's more familiar with the lower part of the creek, so I'll let him speak on that part. But the people along Cove Creek definitely need help because the next high-water event could possibly take out homes and structures. And what's it gonna take to get some help? Are these homes gonna have to wash away, be flooded? Does somebody have to die before we get any help? Because there are some homes definitely in line with the water that could be washed We need help.
Well, Greg Baker, how Scott washed away, he died from it. And they sure ain't done a thing on Stony Creek either. So that ain't even a death thing. He gone seeking to solve this problem. And Greg, I knew him personally, fine man. I really can say this, there's a man told me he seen him smoking a cigarette on his porch. Greg was an older gentleman, okay? But he was in better health than I am for, at the last time I seen him. I think the water was rising so high, and him sitting on his porch smoking a cigarette is what a man told me. He couldn't get off the porch and get to higher ground. The water raised that high. And it's not only everything that man told there is exactly the trick I'm seeing. I ride, I look at when water gets up. You told about Mr. Hass's place. If the thing wasn't elevated, coming back at the intersection, and probably five foot, six foot, and it runs straight down the road, you cannot get through there in a car, no way. If you don't have a four-wheel-drive pickup, and you better have one like a three-quarter truck, I wouldn't advise it in a pickup that the water runs that far down through there. You told me a lot of your stories, you mentioned.
Rick Spyvy?
Yeah. Now, I know a little bit about that property twenty-five years ago. How much does it like to build up fires and bend to his bridge?
To his bridge, his bridge has got three or four foot of clearance right now.
Okay.
The bridge is in good shape. The bridge is a lot better shaped than the house.
I remember, I can remember, Ray Jacob Mullins, son of the law, built the bridge because I was there, I set the steel with the back of it. I know he built it, it was probably six to seven feet from the bottom of the creek to it.
There's nowhere near that now.
Did you say there was also a Mr. Johnson here to speak on this?
Yes, Greg.
If you would like to come on up?
My name's Greg Johnson. I live in Stanley Town, but my mother's property is on the lower end of Cove Creek that Mr. Castile can tell you. But my biggest concern is all erosion that is, the creek is causing now going into the French River. I mean, it's, I'd say my mother's lost a good acre in one spot, and then it's eroded the banks so bad in other spots that it's starting to cut into her fields. But down at what we call Pearl Alley's, Mr. Castile can tell you exactly where that's at. In order, the power company, the lines coming across that property, in order to get from one side of creek to the other, they gotta ford it. It has washed the ford out the last three years. And it's about to cut enough off where the ford's at to, they would have to have some other way to cross the creek. Because it's, when Ms. Alley was alive, she could cross it, probably them little old rubber boots gotta be high. And now, if you can keep it above or below knee-deep, you're doing good. But it's, it's really gonna cause a very bad problem if something isn't done to stop that erosion there. And there's no way of doing it without getting in the water. There's just no way because you can't, the creek has washed back so far that in order to get from the bank, well, the bank's gotta be high, there's no way down into where it's washed in. And it would, you'd have to go through the old ford, old crossing and up the creek, even in order to start, trying to clean the creek out to keep that ford open before, there's hayfields across the creek, and for the power company and the telephone company, they have to cross there in order to do their job. But there's, if that ford goes, there's no way. And the only way to do it, to stop that, would be to burn the creek. And, uh, the only way to do it, to, to stop that, would be to bring the creek in. It has, uh, it made a turn below the ford, and it was, when, actually, uh, you know, the water on the slow side will let the gravel build that, well, that, uh, causes the, the creek to wash down over into the bottom. But, in doing so, that's what's caused the ford up here, it has let, uh, say damned it up to where the, the water has to push against the other side of the hill to flow, and then it just goes to the other side and it's washing that out too, before it go down. So, actually, right there, there is three, three major sediment problems right there on that one two-hundred-foot stretch of, of the creek. Mr. Fields has actually given me the phone numbers to call to talk to, and Danny's come up and talked to my mom, or Mr. Castiel. But, you don't know what to do anymore, you just, you either break the law and do it yourself, or ask somebody to come help you. Thanks, thank you.
Stephanie, Danny, y'all said you were familiar with the situation. Do y'all have any actions that you would like to recommend? I mean, the only thing that I could think of is we could send a letter. I guess we could send one to work the Army Corps of Engineers, I would think would be the, the best one.
Okay, yeah.
Go ahead. I took it, before Josh come aboard, I was already working at, uh, kind of Griffin's office, and, uh, they told me that, uh, to, he was hard to come here, that they was done, they couldn't let you do it, and I talked to Josh a couple times. Uh, all I hear is FEMA, FEMA, FEMA. I've seen Icefall worried about FEMA, I've seen what they got, nothing. Maybe we need to step on up and see the government, uh, like Mr. Fields told about. How does it get washed away? Uh, yeah, them people's gonna get it. I don't know what day they gonna get it, what month they gonna get it, what year, but it's come, because I've seen it above his house, at least two-hundred yards, three-hundred yards, running down the road. Only good thing, he's got about a six-foot bunker, that it turns it away from his house. If it ever gets above the bank, it's done got him from behind, it's coming this way, he's gone and everybody else is too. Uh, you go on down there where he talked about where the trash can should be at the intersection, uh, I don't know who owns that, I know the White House are on the right.
Who, Pruitt?
Who?
Pruitt?
Yeah, yeah, she was a Pruitt, uh, kind of her husband, uh, Harry Cox.
Yeah. Danny's actually owns that now, he lives at Fort Gage.
Okay. No, that one, I've seen in definitely a hundred of, that other one, I'm pretty sure places, probably three or four hundred yards, really, there you go. But now, the other one at the Pruitt place, I've seen into there for a couple hundred yards too, and the deal is, I'll, I get out and I look at that, because I live on the river table, okay? I see what's coming to hit me, and, uh, 'cause I know it's coming, if I see it coming up there. And I gotta sneak in every back road that I can to even get back to my place on the river.
Look, there behind my house, you talking about the bank, in the backyard, I have a shop, twenty by forty, and the water was within six inches of getting in it this time. I can take you and show you the, where it left the branches and stuff, and it was right there, ready to get in that shop, if it hadn't started dropping, the shop would've been flooded.
Uh, Mr. Fields there, I think he's a little older than I am, 'cause he told me he remembered, uh, them cleaning that, I can say, I can remember sixty-seven them cleaning that, uh, around that area. I think you said you remember cleaning it once before.
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven.
But I remember them cleaning Stony Creek.
Seventy-seven, they got Stony Creek, Cove Creek, and Stock Creek, right?
They did all three of them.
And Little Stony too.
All right, let me ask you a question there. What role does environmental have to do with this, EPA? I know on, on Stony Creek, they've tried for years to get that fixed up there, where it splits, and up above the, this camp, and they can't, because we've been told that you can't even move rock out of there, you can't go into it, and Greg said something about breaking the law to do anything, you know, personally. Is that a problem, going in there and fixing that? Is that the reason these people are staying away from it?
Not on Cove Creek, because when we had it, when we got that small excavator in there and worked on it a few years ago, the Army Corps of Engineers classifies Cove Creek as intermittent stream. That's like all summer, it's been dry. A perfect time to get in there and work on it, because there's no aquatic organisms there. There's nothing destroyed, because it's dry, it's just rock. So...
The water's underneath the rock, it's really the biggest thing, and you don't see it, because it's got probably since been a rock on top of it.
Where it's classified as intermittent stream.
Yeah. I understand. Who, who would you suggest that we send a letter to? You've talked to everybody for a year, oh, yeah. Where, where do we get started?
So, have you contacted, um, DEQ, the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality?
I don't think I have.
Or what about the Virginia Marine Resources Commission?
No.
Because they're over the bays, rivers, creeks, uh, stayed on, generally those that are navigable, uh, navigable or subject to EBB and flow of the tide and stuff. So, would they be some people that we could contact?
Let's just send a letter to all of them, and just, you know, see which one actually responds at this point, because it's, it's clearly an issue, um, and we just, you know, we need some help.
So what I did was, I went by your list of people that you went through, and the last one that you talked to was, um, the VA 511, that's the last. So what I did was I went and I looked up who was over, like, the Corps of Engineers and all that, so Google's my friend. So, let's, yeah, great, let's do all of them.
Mr. Wilson, you look like you had something to say?
Yeah, just from what I know, I mean, kinda starting, I know Mr. Dingus probably has a little bit more background than I do on it. Um, as Mr. Fields said, FEMA did come out and look at it, but then I think also the state came and looked at it, which we do have a meeting set with them tomorrow, um, to see how do the things that they looked at through the winter storm, um, kinda what their project priorities are. So, I mean, this one may be on the list, we don't know, till tomorrow.
Mr. Fields, have you seen anybody at all up there?
Uh, not recently, no. I saw Mr. Wilson come over Monday when I wasn't there, but other than that...
What Mr. Wilson's referring to is that group of NRCS that came and walked out on your property, you were out there that day, and I was with you, and, uh, they did, we looked at several sites that day, and they would put your, your project and other projects into their dynamics on whether they qualify for that particular, uh, program, and, uh, that's the meeting that Mr. Wilson is, uh, referring to that we have tomorrow. So we may have some more information on if and or why not this particular project fits that NRCS program, and, uh, and then, once they say no, it may be a process that it vets on to the next, next group.
Yeah, even if it is a no, we'll certainly talk about it, and I'll, you know, ask the question on what the next steps are, what they know for resources. Um, and then as far as the Army Corps of Engineers goes, I talked to Congressman Griffith's office, and I know Mr. Fields has as well, they referred it to the Army Corps, um, and I have an email also in with the contact with them, but I haven't heard anything back, I can follow up on that.
And, uh, Ms. Lover, the groups that you talked about, if a project like this were approved by the Corps of Engineers, uh, it would inevitably be a, uh, environmental review, and that brings in those agencies that look at their specific, uh, scope of work, you know? DWR would look at, uh, fish, and, uh, Natural Heritage would look at endangered species, and, and so on.
Where the creek's drowsy, I'm right up there. Have any fish to look at.
But they still, that's processed.
Thank you for bringing this up. I, we really appreciate it as a board. Uh, Mr. Dingus, Mr. Wilson, we appreciate that you all are already working on it, and Danny, and Danny, uh, sorry, Mr. Castiel, I'm sorry, I, I appreciate y'all all working on that. Thank you, sir.
Well, we would really appreciate any help you could get us, because like I said, the homes and property, everything's in danger.
We'll see what they say tomorrow, and bring some action back, or something, we'll, we'll pester somebody to death, I got, uh, Ms. Smith.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else for public expression?
Sorry, I know we might over a little bit, um, hard times.
My name is Junior Dingus, I live in the Mays-Stanleytown Road, and creek, those trees are growing up in the creek. I got up here today, and that one broke off, had half of my driveway floored, it come out of the creek. Tip was in the edge of the road, but it didn't get in the road, it got half of my driveway. And right above my driveway, with a chaplain on that field, and they, I'd say there's five foot of it washed off, and if it comes through there, it'll come right down through my mother's house. So we need something done better. It washed my bridge out twice, and right now, it's just dry, just floating. Right below my driveway, though, it washed all that road out there, I forget now what year it was, it was really big.
We'll, we'll see what comes out of that meeting tomorrow, hopefully we can get a path started on this.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. If you, sir, yeah, if you don't care, uh, my office did tell you how to get it over, you probably already know, but if you want to, I'll come out there one day and we'll look at it.
Okay, I'll do that, Danny.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
What was your name again, sir?
Junior Dingus.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public expression?
Well, boy, it looks like y'all's got a busy day here. I'll just be a minute, uh, my name's Gary Baker from Bootsy Creek. I wanna thank, uh, these guys that worked on all the getting another, and Dale Sanders here from Hilton's for getting that, uh, truck up, fire truck in our community, they've done a great job, and I want, we're blessed to have those men. I wanted to say also, VDOT has paved, uh, probably another tenth, maybe a tenth and a half of road from Bo, Boer's Chapel Road up to Overland. They don't like, but about sixty yards of having that whole road finished, a pavement where you don't knock your vehicle out of line when you go up where the water's been over the road. Uh, I wanna thank Eddie for getting that done first, done a good job. Miss Wilm with a blessing, failed and broke her heel, and she wanted me to thank Eddie, said they told her that Istra General, they was gonna get her road fixed. I guess we're waiting on more than that. Hopefully they'll get it. But she wanted me to thank Eddie for getting that rolling. And I wanna thank that young lady that come up here talking about these kids that's got cancer. That fifteen-year-old, Rachel is my niece, she's in bad shape, and I appreciate if ever one of you would, uh, put her on your prior list. Like the lady said, they something going on here in S County, and y'all gonna have to get to the bottom of it quickly, before more young'uns is, uh, come down with this stuff. They feel St. Jude's up there. Anyway, pray for that young'un, and I wanted to, uh, say also, uh, I'm trying to get my mind together, I lost it out there, can't hardly keep my crap, but anyway, uh, uh, I'm sorry, Chris, I'm gonna have to quit, but, uh, oh, I, I know what it was, I wanted to be sure to say something about, uh, uh, you know, I think the Supreme Court handed down a, a, uh, opinion about Department of Education, if they dismount that Department of Education, I figure, well, thanks God, yeah. You know, we'll probably lose them ten percent, 'cause they gonna want them back, and I ain't gonna let them come over here. I mean, if I was in control of Tennessee, I would want them here. And, you know, I ain't got no horse in the race, I ain't got no, you know, but, uh, that's something y'all need to think about. It may happen, and it may not, you know? Thank you all, appreciate you. Pray for that girl.
We will. Thank you, sir. Anyone else here for public expression? All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close public expression. Uh, anything, any actions that we need to take? I think we discussed most of it pretty well, as it came up, so...
I was gonna cover something that I referred to earlier, that Ms. Powers spoke on it again during her presentation, and, uh, I think the board's familiar with what's going on here, that she did request, uh, Ms. Kedley to look into some of her code, what she calls code violations, and respond. That was her question for last meeting, but she brought it up again today. And my question, Ms. Kedley, if you've had an opportunity to review those code violations that she's referring to?
I did, and I responded to her in writing.
Could you share that with the public?
Um, I'm not prepared at this moment to do that, maybe later in the meeting.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll have probably a break before attorney general, would you mind bringing it up then? Or would you need more time?
I mean, of course, it's public information, and I can share what was shared in our response to her. I am aware, and she said today, that she's filed a declaratory judgment and injunction in the circuit court. It may be more proper to not talk about it right now, because it's gonna be before the judge, and those questions will get addressed there. So that's probably where we should leave it for now.
Is there any way to get the attorney general to look at it? To, like, comment something?
Yes, I mean, you can make a request to the attorney general. I've made a request to the Department of Education myself, and I haven't heard back. Um, I had thought about the attorney general's opinion about it, but I hadn't moved to that step yet, but now we're in this, you know, declaratory judgment filing, so we will have to address things through that.
Shouldn't most of her, uh, questions be taken to the school board?
Yes, that's where it's, they're gonna have to take the lead on that filing in circuit court, because most of those questions are for them to answer.
I think a lot of the codes that she referred to were in regards to taxes, which the school board doesn't have anything, anything to do with taxes.
Do you have a specific question about that?
I can look at it, I'll run a break.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, it's been my understanding, same as you, Mr. Junior, that the school board is responsible for all that. It's at their discretion. I think a lot of that-
Yes, they're the ones that makes the decision to let Tennessee students come. It's not this board. We've tried to change it before, and we couldn't do nothing about it. So it's up to the school board. And to me, that's where she needs to take most of her questions, is to the school board.
I think she'd find more traction there.
I think she did. I think she received the same thing that you received, or was it forwarded by you?
I was, it was forwarded by me. I talked with her this morning and told her she needs to, you know, send those directly to them.
That they haven't, they haven't responded this morning?
I don't think they have, but I don't know that for sure.
Well, I'd like to say something. I don't think the school board should make that decision. I think the board supervisors should make that decision, and I'll tell you why. Everybody that's on that school board board, except one person of my knowledge, has been a member as a school teacher, principal, some affiliation with the school system. So to me, that's a conflict of interest. And I think that definitely that what we need to do, we don't never meet with the school board, the school board don't meet with the supervisors. I honestly think that there should be at least three or four times a year, instead of us never meet till we know, to get on the right pages, instead of pacing the buck. That's about the way I see it. I don't know how y'all see it, but I think that we should be meeting with the school board and talking with them to get answers.
Yeah, I think the school board could benefit from some diversity in their, in their representation. But once again, that's going to be decided with work for election in two years. So, you know, if somebody wants to run for school board and wants to change it, I think that that would be, or it sounds like.
It sounds to me like we need to vote on it now to change it for two, two years, because that'll be paced on to the next time, and the next time, next time, it'll never, nothing ever be changed. But I think if you run on that right there, you've been a member of the school system, I don't see why you should be a member of being on the school board, because that's a conflict of interest in any way you love that.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything that we can do. The law pretty clearly states that it's at their discretion, at the school board's discretion. So I think if, if we've got-
I'd like to see it then. Got to have proof of it, sure.
It's in the code. It is really in the code. I mean, the only thing that we get for a board, or as for the funding, is what's handed down from the Virginia Department of Education on their website each year for what our, and that's based off of information that the school board feeds to them. So we have our information based off of what they've submitted, and there's no-
Where do I find it now? How could I?
Get them out.
School board office.
Just, I get it, school board office.
But do you remember that stuff I went over with you all?
Yeah, and I didn't understand type of it. If you want to know the truth of it, maybe I got some of it, and maybe I didn't get all of it. I'll say it that way.
What do you want me to say?
No.
All right, let's, let's continue on. I don't think we're going to get any resolution on this, so let's continue on to our public hearings. We have one public hearing today on the possible adoption of ordinance to amend the transient occupancy tax ordinance at section five, reports required and remittance of tax to ensure the commissioner of revenues compliance with updated Virginia Code, section fifty-eight dot one dash three eight two seven. All right, I'll open up public expression for that. Is there anyone here for public expression for the ordinance amendment? I'll close that public hearing. We had no public comments. Do any of our board supervisors have any thoughts on this? Any questions?
I think we have a question. What areas were changed?
Mostly in the commissioner of revenues compliance, record keeping, and how she goes about keeping up with those records.
It's more administrative.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the board supervisors, we all received a copy of the changes? Didn't, were you able to?
Well, they weren't highlighted, so I didn't know what was-
Yeah, they were.
The first one I sent you, yeah.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
We had a copy of that at times. I was a little too anxious, because that was making a lot easier. All right, any other questions, comments? All right, do I have a motion to accept this amendment?
She'll move.
Mr. Junior moves. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Stephanie seconds. Everybody vote in way, in favor of a way of saying aye?
Aye.
Proposed? All right, motion carries. Since public expression ran a little bit long, I'd like to take about a fifteen-minute recess here, or thirteen minutes. Let's be back here at ten thirty and ready to vote. All right, we'll get back to it. We've got a full agenda here still yet. Unfinished business, doesn't look like there was anything under that category?
Where did we add the property management?
That is indeed new business.
New business, okay.
I guess new business, we will be hearing from Steve Pike with Period Trails. Nice to see you again, Mr. Pike.
So I guess, Mr. Chair, it's been probably about a year since I was in here to speak with you all, and I appreciate having the opportunity to come back and speak with you. I have Molly Land, she's going to provide you some information here shortly as well. She's our new marketing director. Molly's been on this about a year. And then in the back, Karen Sheets, like always, here in Scott County, she's our new chief financial officer. We're so thrilled to have Karen on board with us. And then in the back room, we've got Eugene McLellan, our Scott County board member for our authority. And then John Perry is our emergency management manager for the, for the trail system. So I wanted to kind of give you an update, and I'll let Molly give you a little bit more and parse some statistics on tourism. But we've got a lot of excitement going on with our trail system here in the region. And most of you are aware, the authority was created in two thousand and eight by the General Assembly, when we saw the small towns and communities started to struggle as the coal industry began to slow down. And this trail system was developed through the counties of Lee all the way through Tazewell. We have motorized, non-motorized trail systems, and currently we have about four hundred miles of those trail systems. And what we're seeing is a tremendous increase in tourism. We're seeing people coming from all over the United States. We've had folks come down from Canada who are enjoying the trails. And we have a trail here in Scott County on top of Hynop, Thunderstruck, Equestrian Trail here as well. One of the things that we've moved along the last couple of years as a result is we've, we have created jobs within the authority. We've increased our Trail Ranger staff and our maintenance staff, and we brought on new positions with John in the emergency management position, Molly's role with the, with the marketing, which has been so helpful with us. You may have seen recently, matter of fact, as recent as last week, very exciting news, we've now connected with the Hatfield McCoy Trail System out of West Virginia, and that's a huge positive tourism component for Virginia, and especially in southwest Virginia. So now riders have the ability to come directly out of West Virginia into Virginia, there in the town of Pecan, and traverse through the trail system. And likewise, with folks in Virginia can go back and forth. So that's been a thing that's been at work for several years. We're excited about it. We've seen already a large number of visitors, and Molly's filled a lot of inquiries with people wanting to come here to the area and not only experience the trail system, but they're looking for other opportunities, fish at Clinch River, go to some of the state parks that we have in these counties. One of the things that you all probably aware of and read is, is I, we're seeing a trend of our, a lot of reports here in the last month or two about the population potential decline in these counties down in this area. And concerning from a standpoint of workforce development and losing our youth leaving the area to try to find better paying jobs, and one of the things that, that we've looked at internally, and that we've started the process with, we've met with Mountain Empire Community College in southwest Virginia Community College. We met with those college presidents, and we're working on workforce development program, where they can adjust their curriculum to not only help us fill these new jobs in maintaining and constructing new trails, but as this trail system comes online, and we have a new trail that's being constructed and is almost finished in Tazewell County right now. We know when these new systems come in play, we're going to see additional businesses that will come online, campgrounds, Airbnb's are becoming more popular, restaurants and so forth. So we felt it was very important, because we want to maintain the youth here in these, these communities, and we want folks to have good paying jobs. So we're working with the colleges to help them with that curriculum. Hospitality is a big critical shortage that a lot of the folks that have restaurants and so forth are looking for people to help in that regard. And lodging is obviously a challenge in some of the communities here as people travel through to enjoy the area. So I'm going to have Molly come up at this point. She's got some additional information that she will provide to you for the marketing thing.
Hello. As Steve said, my name's Molly Land, I'm the marketing director at the SRA. And Steve hit some of the high points, but I'd like to tell you a little bit more about the data we're collecting and what it tells us about our ridership and their relationship to Scott County. Passed around a folder that contains a few things from us, but I did want to include a piece of the information that we utilized from Virginia Tourism Commission, and that's the white sheet with the blue graphs. That's from their arrivalist program. They use this geofencing to track tons of data points from interest places across our region. And that's something that we use to synthesize with our own data, kind of figure out where people are coming from, how long they're staying, and what they're doing while they're here. One of the things that we're able to really tell from that is when there's a hotel in the area, where people are going after that, where they've come from. So that's one thing that we're kind of able to see, you know, people, people are coming through, but they're not obviously necessarily staying here. So that's something that we would certainly like to see for Scott County in the future. Last year, when I started this role with marketing for the SRA, I identified three main projects that I thought would accelerate the foundation that was laid forth by my colleagues. And those were an updated brand, some of which you see in the items, and I'm really proud to display for our seven counties and city of Norton. The other was a new website, and the third is better data collection on our ridership. So the data collection piece required us to move all of our permit sales online, and that did a few things for us that includes, we do have some retail partners here in Scott County who were selling permits for us, and how that process looked before was they would have to buy permits upfront, and we had a ten permit minimum, and then they would sell those, and moving them online, and they would make three dollars per permit, our yearly permits. And what we've been able to do online is to allow them to have a retail stand in their store to still capture that data that it's coming from them here in Scott County or wherever the retail stand might be, and they still receive commissions on those without having to purchase them upfront, which alleviates some of that pressure point. But moving that permit sales online, we did that with about two weeks to go halfway through June. And what we've been able to find out is that sixty-two percent of our permit purchases are coming from places south of our trail systems. So the good thing for Scott County is people who are coming, passing through to go to our trail system in Pennington Gap, as well as in Covert, are likely coming through this area. Our hope is to continue deep diving that economic data as I really start to learn that role, to learn my role, excuse me. But there are other studies, and I've linked one in the QR code on the back of your sheet there, that tell about what ATV, UTV, and OHV riders bring to the towns that they're passing through. Specifically, one of the studies in there says that the trail systems in Utah and Minnesota that are a lot like ours, a lot like the one in West Virginia, are bringing in a hundred and forty-four dollars a day for tourism spending versus thirty-eight dollars a day for other outdoor enthusiasts. So what we know is that, and it makes sense, when you see a trailer come through, being pulled by a big truck with a machine on the back, you got to gas it all up instead of just the car for the hikers. So, and, and another point that we like to make is seeing the trails does offer for those with accessibility challenges, a way to see the Appalachian Mountains like you really can't from a mountain bike or, or from hiking. Finally, you know, what does that mean for us locally? It means we're really excited that people are spending nationally on ATVs and ATV trails and in their communities. But also, we know that since we've kind of upgraded some of these things, like Steve mentioned, upgrading some of our staff, that we are up forty-six percent year-to-date in twenty twenty-five over twenty twenty-four for permit sales, and we're up fifty-one percent in sales dollars. So we are capturing some of that national interest, and we're certainly growing. As Steve Pike mentioned and has mentioned before, we are welcome and love to have rider opportunities in Scott County if the county's willing. We answer any and all inquiries that we have about people wishing to build trails on their land or work with us on that. So those conversations, of course, Steve will probably talk to you about that, are always welcome. But until we get those trails built, we want to ensure that those passing-through dollars are, are being captured by our businesses here in Scott County. Couple ways that we're looking to do that is we are launching, I mentioned our retail program, and the other one is that we'll be promoting food, lodging, fuel, and machine repair businesses through a new advertising program that launches in twenty twenty-six, and we will be really excited to invite Scott County businesses to participate in that. That's kind of all I have. Were there any questions specifically about marketing or the data that we've collected so far?
Do you have outdoor signage for the participating retailers that sell tickets?
That's a great question, Mr. Ski. Is it?
Yes.
Okay, nice to meet you. So with our updated brand, the first thing we wanted to do was to alleviate that need for the retailers to purchase the permits. And then as we've been able to go around to those different retailers, we have about thirty-five partners across the seven counties and city of Norton. We've been able to identify what type of signage they would like to have. So some have selected that they would like to have banners, some would like to have the pop-up little flags, and so we're getting, we're getting those things. We have probably about five more businesses that we need to hear from to make that bulk order all at once. But through my budget and some money that I've been able to procure through a Virginia Tourism Grant, we're going to be able to also provide those things at no cost to the, to the partners.
How many miles of trails do we have right now, like the south besides or four where or something?
Four hundred plus miles, and we use the plus because it's, I think, we're adding, we're able to say, Steve said, yeah, so we're adding, yeah.
Is that in Scott County?
Four hundred miles is across all of our trail systems.
Does that clue coming back in, they call Hatfield McCoy Trails, is that with it?
So we're separate from them, but we do have a connection now to their ridership, which is extremely beneficial. They've been around longer than us.
Yeah.
They are probably the, for now, the premier trail system on these. Give you a little time.
I've ripped their trails twenty years ago, and they told us it might be a little rough terrain, and we ride over Harlan County and all. We told them what they had was picnic and where we been. But do you count any of them trails like over down in Pennington and do that?
Pennington, Pennington Gap is our trail, it's called Stone Mountain.
Okay, now don't that go all the way through there, and some coming coast to in the middle borough and all down towards Willbilly.
We only service and maintain and service as well as provide ranges for the trails in Virginia.
A few years ago, we developed some trails using our back roads, our gravel roads, and made some route routes, had them named- and made some route, had them named and delineated. Are you still marketing those?
You don't prefer here for the county?
Yeah, for in Scott County.
No, we don't currently have any of that information. So if you have that, it'd be great to.
I'll dig it up. That's, that's something that we worked on with Sean a few years ago, and there was a few trails that gave people the opportunity to come and ride their Jeep or along our back roads. We have plenty of, and I'll see what I can find.
Sure, that'd be great to, great to see that.
Could you explain the trailhead designation? It doesn't have to be on top of a mountain. Could you kind of go over that a little bit? Might even be something in line with what Mr. Dingus is talking about for ATVs on our gravel roads as possible.
Yeah, so I think trail access points are something we're giving a lot of attention to currently. We've used some wayfinding or signage grant money to build, we have the materials right now, and they should be built very soon, but some better signage for our trail access points where people park and trailer and get on the trail, also known as trailhead. So one of the things that we've kind of identified with our mostly new staff is that we had a bit of a clarity problem, you know, where do people park? What do I do when that parking lot is full? And so our new kiosks will have three sections of four-by-four branded signs with our main rules, links to our other rules, links to how you purchase a permit. And really, all we need is a place where people can park and a place that we could put the sign, direct access. So, you know, we have a lot of tourists who come in there, and they bring in their machines on a trailer, and they just need a place to park and access. But one thing that we definitely keep in mind is, and this is a lot of the work that Steve and John have been doing with VDOT, is making sure that our residents can access these trail, these trails from their homes, right? Not everybody's going to be able to do that because of the restrictions from VDOT, but that's something that we've been working on for our residents. How can they go reasonably from their home safely and access the trail? Because as we know, you know, a trailer might be $15,000 a truck to pull it, could be $50,000. So thinking not only about the tourism dollars, but about our residents as well. And that's something, I mean, if that space existed, we'd certainly love to, to put some resources there for trail access point.
Did, does that trail up there, I'll call it, top of the hot knob or?
Thunderstruck, is it?
Right, that always over to the right on Red Sign a year or two ago. Been too long, I forgot it. Now, is that a horse trail?
Yes, sir.
And now, we're business like a four-wheeler trail, stark here in the county. I don't know.
So currently, there's not a motorized trail system here for Scott County?
I never know.
Right, so we, the question trail, the current trail system that we have there at Hot Knob.
I know 20, 25 years ago, we used to go up May, and George Hare had property up there. And we'd ride a bit on top, then later, I'd come to the guys, I said, you want to ride all the way through the forest department up there where we logged? And we sat there, and here come a game warden through, and he told us he could take the four-wheelers and all of that. We wasn't allowed out there, and they said the other, we taken, take, to give us a ride back to vehicles, trailers. We just kind of loaded up, and he said we are restricted. He said that he would, we rode them out there, we thought, he thought we could go back. And he said, we wasn't allowed to ride on none of them government roads and all. And then I was up there two weeks ago and had the gate shut up there in May where the straight where the sawmill used to be. But like I said, I don't know of any place that you can ride one.
Have you looked at the river system as a possible expansion of trailhead, well, spearhead trails into the river system?
So I think that's a great question, because one of the things, and Molly's been looking at the data on that, and I mentioned it briefly a while ago, folks when they're coming in, they're looking for a three-day type trip. And part of it is, you know, having you to access the trail. But what we'd like to be able to figure out is how can we get folks to get to the quintry or the fish or over to another spot that, you know, would help aid in getting more people into the area to see these things. Our code section is pretty broad. It speaks to the outdoor recreational opportunities for the Southwest Regional Recreation Authority. And one of those other sections that talks about having cooperative agreements with the surrounding states. And as we just saw in West Virginia, that one's come online, and we'll continue to work with these other adjoining states where the opportunity presents itself to expand that. So I think that's something we can bring up to our board, because again, as Molly mentioned, we work very closely with VDOT. They're looking at, you know, average daily traffic counts of the roadways and speed limits and so forth, to where we can adopt some of this, some of these roads into our trail system that makes it easier for people to access some of these points. And so we have a very strong relationship with the folks that are in the Bristol District, working with them on a, you know, monthly basis to look at this. So access is a critical piece for us. So, you know, part of the reason I wanted to come back today is, you know, we rely on the counties heavily as part of our budget and funding, and we would appreciate, you know, down the road from Scott County to come back online with some of the appropriation that you all had provided in the past to us. I know you all have, you know, decisions, tough decisions you have to make in your balls, looking at holistically a budget. But we would be appreciative to have some type of funding come back to, because it helps us, again, in many ways with maintaining the trail systems and so forth for the area. So, you know, one of the reasons that, you know, we're very excited, we just see the overwhelming numbers that are coming in from the statistics from tourism in these communities. And you can go look at them yourself, from St. Paul to Coburn to Pocahontas. Go up to the town of Pocahontas now, there's no houses for sale. They've all been bought, have been turned to Airbnb's. They're creating lodging opportunities for the folks that use that trail system. So it's just really changed those communities in a very positive way. So between that, and again, one of the things that we're looking at is the workforce development portion of this with the colleges, because that's very important. We want to make sure that our youth stay in these communities and have good jobs, and I think that's a critical piece for what we can do to help get back here in these counties, so.
Has there been any adverse effect in housing? I know that every community is running short on housing, like in Pocahontas. You said all the houses have been bought up. Are they pricing the locals out of the market?
You know, that's a great question, and not being, you know, you know, deep into the real estate numbers, I really don't have a good answer on them, Molly, if you've tracked that at all.
Just, yeah, conversationally, because we go up there and speak with the retail partners, spend time up there. I would say no. I think they're honestly welcoming it. A number of our retailers also serve on their town board there. And I think they were telling me they thought three people were leaving to every one person coming in. So they have, in Pocahontas, they have a vision for the future to revitalize their town to become like an ATV resort, you know, comp stay, everything you want to do is right there. And they've got some real historic buildings that they're trying to whip into some other how, you know, unique housing features. So I don't think, I don't think so, but don't, I mean, that's just conversationally.
And for every, every bit of progress that we have, there is a little bit of pushback, so I just want to make sure. Another question, I saw in this report, the spending and economic impact, it says 84, I'm sorry, sorry, 74 jobs have been created. How did y'all arrive at those numbers?
Is that VTC? That's Virginia Tourism's data. So that's going to be, I just wanted to share with you all that that's something that we are able to tap into. And Michelle Workman, who is the VTC rep for this area, I work with her diligently on, hey, how do we synthesize, mostly, how do we synthesize data to go attack for more grants? And so I just wanted to include a piece of the information that we received. I would say the 74 number that they came to there, that's going to be inclusive of probably all tourism.
That's welcome.
Yeah, but in our, you know, we're, we've doubled our workforce in the last year and a half at the SRA, and that's something that we're extremely proud of. The mission of the SRA is reared in economic development. And so when we think about, of course, that $19 million economic impact number, that's obviously very important. But the other side of it is people who grew up on the mountains, riding four-wheelers and riding dirt bikes, now being the people who are rangers, who are working on the trails, that's something that means, I would say, for our leadership team even more than seeing the dollars filter back through the community is, you know, trying to build careers where people want to keep their families here, doing something that they actually love. You know, we know it's one thing to be employed, and it's another thing to not get the Sunday scaries. And that's something that we're extremely dedicated to, and that's what we look at with our economic impact as well.
Have you all considered working with the National Forest for any of your trailheads? I know Duffield, if you go back up in Cliff Mountain, has a number of forest service roads back in there. Love to see some of those get turned into official trails. I talked to them maybe two years ago when I was first coming on here, and they said that was really something that they do, and the conversation just kind of fell flat there. I didn't know if you all worked with them or have any plans to work with them.
That's a great question. We are, we're planning to pursue that, because I think there's some opportunities there to, for us with the trail system and working with them. So that's something that's definitely on our radar that we're going to be moving forward with as a group to have a deep conversation about how, because there's other parts of the Commonwealth where there are trails that exist on their properties.
Yeah, I think the excuse they gave me was they didn't want to pay for extra rangers up there. But if, you know, you all are providing the rangers and people to maintain and check the trails, I mean, you can get a, you can get a four-wheel drive truck through there. Most of the trails out there, so it'd be great for, and it's beautiful this time of year.
It really is.
So, and you can drive all the way to like Big Chir from, from there.
Yeah, I've rounded all the way to Big Stone, all the way through there.
Yeah. What is your all's process on like obtaining and developing new trails? I mean, that's not maybe, you know, government land. How do you advertise?
So that's a great question. So we rely heavily, like, board supervisors and I try to meet with the local government bodies, our board members that are appointed by the boards as well as a conduit for us. But if we, as we're out in the communities and we hear of a potential opportunity, we will go and sit down with landowners and have that conversation. We have land use agreements that we can execute with, you know, landowners that are willing to do that. Because for us, it's more important to be able to explain the economic impact for the community. So it's like when we all volunteer to be part of the civic club, you're giving back in a way. So oftentimes, I'll tell some of the landowners, if you're utilizing a portion of your property for this, that's a way of you giving back to the community. It's greater in essence for all. So we're happy, and we always, and that's why I like to come and speak to the supervisors, if you're aware of some parcel out here, somebody that would be interested or some group, and a lot of these are old existing, what we call outlaw trails, have been on these old mining properties, and we've worked very well with those companies to formalize those agreements and actually build the trails. So I think as the community see the tourism dollars that continue to come in, and the beauty of Southwest Virginia is unmatched, in my opinion, in any other part of the country. We just see a lot of people, again, coming here, especially this time of year for the Fall of Colors. We have the elk herd up in Bacannon County near the Southern Gap Trail Systems that we have there as well. So it's, it's doing very well for these communities, and I, again, want you all to have our update again. If your all's budget allows some reappropriations back to us, it would be greatly appreciated.
Is the horse trail from the horse park in Dungannon, is it complete now?
So that's separate from us, the horse park there in Dungannon. We have the trail system up on top of Hot Knob.
But you don't go from the horse park up?
There's not a direct connector at this point.
That would be part of it.
There was an effort to buy spearhead trails to establish a trail that would connect Dungannon to the Back Valley, the Hunter's Valley, and the horse park, and then to Hot Knob. But easement constraints is what they ran into.
I was having trouble with these, the tiny one where you ever got strung down.
Unstall that out.
I think there was one property owner that just wasn't negotiating.
Any other questions?
So you're asking for a contribution today?
Yes, sir.
What's the amount? What are the surrounding counties, what's their budget?
Well, you know, and I had Karen put this together in case we had that question. So specifically for Scott, you know, and go back to 2020, you know, paid $15,000, $14, $14, and then it dropped to five down recently. Some of the other counties I can show you, Wise County, back in 2020 was paying $25,000, 21, they paid $35,000, $35,000, $35,000 up through now. Let's see, Dickinson County's paid 2020, $25,000, 2025, $25,000, $25,000. Bacannon County, $25,000, $30,000, $35,000, $30,000. And we've, you know, invoiced the localities for this new fiscal year. So it's been a, again, I know the counties have a budget and priorities that have to be looked into, but I think when you go back originally, I know in 2022, Scott County asked for $25,000, and the authority received $14,000. So it's been consistently about $14,000 up till this last, last year. So if we can kind of get ourselves back to that number, it would be fantastic, because it helps us in so many ways.
Aren't you all receiving money from the state as well?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
How much money?
So we get $2 million that are recent from the General Assembly that helps, you know, fund salaries and equipment purchases and all those things too. So as Molly mentioned, the direct economic impact is going directly back to these seven localities from the trail system. So that's part of, and I guess when the authority was created, oh, eight, is that locality contribution with the dollar state here in these counties.
So that's over 40 times what we were originally contributing, it's like 14,000. That's back, back, back in napkin math. Sorry, I'm sleeping, I probably got three week in it on. Okay. Was there a specific amount you were asking for today? Or do, we've had some budget tier requests come in recently that have tried to like circumvent the regular budget process, and that just makes it harder on everybody when there is an actual contingency thing. So I don't know about the rest of the board, but I'd rather consider this as budget time.
I think that's a good idea. I think we should wait till we get into the budget before we do.
But so your ask is, is 14?
Yeah. Yeah, and I'll just, one of the reasons we came here today as well is I know the new county administrator had spoken with my board chairman, and had actually asked for us to be here today to do this presentation as well. So, and I respect the budget process, I understand how that works, but that was the other reason we came today.
I know this has historically been in the budget. And, you know, I think it's nice to have, you know, especially when we're talking about adding something, you know, maybe back into the budget or whatever, to have these folks come and give an update to us and kind of, you know, get us on the same page, what they're working on and the good work they're doing.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's been some, some great work that you all have done, and we really appreciate it. I mean, I see, you know, ATVs on, on the road all, all the time. But yeah, this year, we had a more than a million dollar deficit that we had to pull out of the rate.
Didn't, you know, last year, didn't we cut their funding about high for South Seagrove?
We didn't find nothing last year.
We went to 5,000. I think we went to 5,000 of them.
Can you, can you check, say you fetched.
I think it's zero. Was it zero this past year?
Mr. Wilson?
This current budget year, yes, there is zero budget. That's correct.
You've been here a few months. What's your vision of tourism for Scott County? I know you're on tourism group.
I know you're on, uh, tourism, uh, group out of St. Paul, what's your vision for tourism in Scott County?
Well, I think we have a lot of assets, uh, in the county, and Ms. Robertson's going to give us an update here, uh, later. And, uh, but I think, I certainly see as far as Spirithead Trails goes, uh, I would love to have trails in Scott County. Because what they bring to the table, you know, you can definitely see, um, impacting positively these other communities in the other counties. So, I mean, they're one piece of it, um, you know, we've got, you know, I don't want to start naming them out, but, uh, you know, we've got a lot of, uh, great things going on in the county. And I, I could see tourism really driving, uh, and taking a center role in a lot of things that we do. Economic development, housing, um, you name it. I mean, uh, you bring people in through tourism to visit, and, uh, and if you've got enough, uh, to entice them to stay, then they, they may very well just decide to move. And I think we've seen that, I've talked to, while I've been here, you know, people, um, coming up from Florida and other places to see the Fall Colors, and then they said that, you know, they just decided that this is where they want to live, and they've made that move. So, you know, whether they're coming to the Bathtub, or they're coming to the Carter Fowl, or they're coming to ride an ATV trail, uh, you know, that's just an introduction to help hold people.
Well, I'll tell you, I take natural kind of land, at least once a month, this whole south. And I ask the people, well, where are they from? Ohio, Georgia, uh, I'll say one out of every three or four is away from here. And, uh, I wouldn't have believed it until I started doing it. And, uh, the deal is, and when that lady put the thing at the Redstone on there, the Redstone business has picked up probably double. I know they told me one day they run out of food, they weren't going to have steak, it's going to be Monday. Now, the deal is, I've been, I've rode them Happy Court Trails, okay? If they wasn't three hundred four wheelers twenty years ago or longer, there wasn't one there. They didn't have anything on Pennington Gap, going up in the Harblin', I rode seventy-three or seventy-six miles. You know a four wheeler will run out of gas and that many, so they let us go down there and get gas, and, uh, and I went to this, and I know a lot of them trails in there because I'm in there on top of log trucks. And, uh, the deal is, we've got it here in the county, but it seems like it's always, like y'all said, Mr. Dingus there, it's always that one man cuts it, stops it. That's the reason we've got nothing in Scott County, because nobody wants to help create it. Now, if we don't start figuring a way to get money, instead of giving money away, we're never going to get it. So we've got to have something to come with, and the rivers, the mountains, horses. And Mr. Manis sees it on a daily basis at Duffield. Everybody going to ride them trails over there at Pennington, Johnson, Harblin', down to Everett's. I can keep naming them all through there, because, because I've been down there, plowed trucks, and, uh, been out over it. But now, we, we've got to get somewhere to get some kind of something to happen, to get tourists in here, because we sure ain't going to get no business, it looks like, I mean, so.
I, I think we're the only county that's not participating with Spirithead Trails' contribution, is that correct?
Well, this past budget cycle, y'all were down to zero, uh, and I know, and I've checked with Karen on, on the invoicing, but, uh, again, I know that, uh, is a, a bigger overview of county budgets have to be looked at and things prioritized, and we, and we respect that. But, uh, you know, anything that you all can do to, I think it's important to know that the folks in 2008 had a great vision with this outdoor recreational trail system, and they credit this authority with these seven counties for a reason. And, and so this, this economic impact is benefiting these, these localities from the trail systems. And, you know, we, we have, just a month and more ago, we had twenty-some folks ride all the way from Iowa, you know, with their trucks and trailers coming to the trail system in Arkansas. So it's, it's really, um, difficult to describe the impact, and, and we all see it every day. I dare say that a day goes by, we don't see these trucks and machines going down the road. And that's, that's benefiting, um, here in a very good way. So we, yeah, we want to find more properties and have these conversations where we can get some trail systems here. And, and, and I think Molly made some valid points, is the folks are passing through, and I see it, Food City, the Exxon, other businesses where these vehicles are stocked off it, as they cut through the county, going over the, the mountain. It's, it's a, Scott County has an opportunity to capture some of those tourism dollars as it comes through.
Mr. Pike, can you explain the caveat of, uh, the amount the county contributes and the discount those systems of that county gets on the permitting?
Yeah, I'll let Molly speak to it.
Yeah, so our, uh, annual permit, one thing that we, which, our permits used to only go through the end of the year, and now we're allowing, um, the, our resident, or our, excuse me, permit holders to get three hundred and sixty-five days with, no matter when they buy it, um, so people who live in our counties, um, that we serve on the back of your floor, they receive a thirty dollar discount, so sixty-three dollars down to thirty-three, uh, dollars for if they live in any of the seven counties or the city of Norton. Um, and then we have, uh, our youth permits are the same price for anybody, no matter where you're from, and our three day permits are the same price, no matter where you're from, um.
Does that, uh, discount apply regardless of what the county contributes?
Yes.
At this time.
It used to be, it had to be the twenty-five thousand dollars.
No, we, we don't, we don't look at it in that regard, at least now. I mean, we apply that discount to any of the residents here, uh, it, it has no bearing or effect on the, on the county contribution. We probably, I guess, two years ago started, and it didn't exist at the time, a twenty dollar three day pass. And that was one of the things that, when we looked at, uh, encouraging more people to visit these areas and be on the trails and making it more affordable for families. So, uh, that gives them an opportunity to come out and experience these trails, see what they're like. And then, and we've seen, uh, repeat riders coming back, they'll get a weekend, they'll come down and ride again, and come back, and ultimately, in a, I, annual passes, because they've now found a new home, uh, to, to bring their family. And I will say this, we promote our trail system as a family-friendly trail system. And when I, when I say that, if you, if you rent it or you do ride it, yep, and you go online and do the waiver that we require to be filled out, we have very strict rules with our trail system. Helmets, speed limits, no alcohol, it's, and that's where we want to be, a very safe outdoor recreational system here in Southwest Virginia. And we get a lot of, and then Molly does through social media, positive comments about, about that very aspect of our trail system. So, um, the outdoor beauty, the history here in Southwest Virginia, uh, we want more and more people to enjoy that and have a better understanding of, of this region.
I think tourism is very valuable to Scott County, I think you mentioned sixty-three percent of the survey comes through southern areas. I think Scott County, our tourism, tourism director here has gotten some job. I think we need to show our commitment to Spirithead Trails for the work you're doing. We're actually benefiting, uh, you know, to a great deal already. I think we need to be a partner with Spirithead Trails, not just a bystander, so that's my position on this.
And I would agree, and I think, uh, Mr. Pike alluded to it. I think just because maybe we don't have trails right now in Scott County doesn't mean that those riders aren't stopping in Scott County and spending money at our businesses, or checking out some of our, um, attractions that we have too, so. But, uh, you know, like I said, you know, there's obviously nothing, uh, this budget year, um, budgeted for. Um, I guess we'd be looking at more contingency if the board would so choose, but, uh, that's kind of where we are.
I would like to consider the contingency fund, uh, we've been participating at five thousand, you were asking for fourteen. I think five thousand is a legitimate amount from contingency.
Uh, the contingencies for emergencies and contingencies, not for budgeted items. This item did come up before the Budget Committee, it was decided that since we were having to pull out of our emergency fund already, our ready day fund, that we shouldn't do that, that that would be fiscally irresponsible of us.
I agree.
I'll say it, Mr. Christine, is that?
Is that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right, and you second?
Yeah.
All right. Um, I guess a roll call vote, because I, I don't know.
Show of hands.
Okay. Everyone, uh, for five thousand for, uh, Spirithead Trails from the contingency fund? Right, against? I would love to get a letter for, from you all in front of the Budget Committee for this year. Hopefully, the budget looks a little bit better, and we can get back to it.
Sure.
Very sorry, but, you know.
Happy to, happy to work with you all.
I really appreciate, I, I, from the bottom of my heart, and I know the rest of the board feels this way, like, we really appreciate this, and we can really see the difference, the positive give back that we're making.
To put, to put a bow on it, thank you so much for having us here, and, um, one ask that we would have, um, that's not financial, budgetary, is, uh, when these conversations come up, or if you hear people riding in, in Scott County, um, if you hear of your residents who might have complaints of people riding on their property, that's another way where we can come in and we can alleviate some of those things, we can get rangers there and signage, and really help them out. One of the things that a lot of our residents have complained about in the past is night riding, they want to sleep. Um, so would you all come help out with this trail so that we can get some rules on it? And, uh, there's, there's a lot of things that we can all do, um, and that we could ask of you as, as those conversations come up. Allow Steve, allow John to come to the table, but then finally, Eugene, um, is on our board, he represents you all, lean into him. He, he is one of our most dedicated board members, he shows up, he's our treasurer, um, he comes every Thursday, and, uh, lean into him in those conversations, and that representation is really important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Moving on to the next one, Ms. Sharon Dixon.
I'm American Red Cross.